Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Jamie Bailey, board member.
Bernadette Bauer, board member. Beth, board member.
Ryan Christelli, board member.
The Lady Handsome Student Representative.
Chris Nessman, superintendent.
Katie Hughes, Elmo Performing Arts.
Jeff Monroe, staff.
Wendy Holden, staff.
Lisa Arnold, staff.
Marilyn Curl, staff.
Blake Bridge.
Fran Ferrer.
Steve Bridge. I work for her.
Jamie Bailey.
Board member of the public.
Plumfire Staff.
Eric Smith Staff.
A.D. Walker Staff.
Okay, approval of board meeting minutes for March eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Approval of board meeting minutes for March eighth, twenty-two.
Second. And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Real quick, can I go back and make a motion to excuse Michael?
Thank you.
For tonight?
A motion made and seconded to excuse Michael from the seat meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jamie. Consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, we'll start with the board policy twelve fifty, students on governing boards. Miss A.D.
So we've been looking at policy twelve fifty and like to amp up our student complications in the application process. So some of the most roles and responsibilities, students need to be present at board meetings. They need to report major updates, principal reports, and they need to attend the WOSD events. We'd also like them to connect with students and staff. Most of our student representatives, they need to be a liaison between all students and the school board. Represent students' interests on policy and procedure. Represent students during legislative defense. And provide communication between the school-based leadership, school board, and the community. So our next steps, I'm giving you some examples of student applications. I've also given you an example of a rubric for a staff or administrator to fill out on a student when they decide they want to be on our board. We already have seven students that have applied. So with this application, we're not going to ask the students that have already applied to fill out new applications because that just seems redundant for them. And then the board will select a student representative. I added a timeline in there on one of the applications on when we would like to have this finished by. And so I would like you guys to go through that and then hopefully at the next board meeting you can have a choice on what you would prefer to see. Some of our next steps, we need to develop a strategy to increase student engagement. We need a bigger voice for our student body and it would be nice to hear from them. Some of the other school districts around that are comparable to our size, they do what's called cookie for a question. So they'll, excuse me, the student reps will ask, you know, at lunchtime, like at the grade school or any of the schools. Hey, what do you see that's happening at your school? And when they answer that question, they'll get a cookie. And we'd like them to do that at least once a month. We would like students to check in weekly with the student body from all schools. They can split it up if they want to, depending on how many student representatives we have. We would want to implement a, an orientation for new student representatives. So they would be trained on what's expected at board meetings, what we'd like to see them do as far as engaging with the students. Basically, that's it. So I'd like you to consider these options so that we can have a bigger voice for our student body and what's happening in our schools. Does anyone have any questions?
I do, I do. You mentioned that you already have seven applications.
Yes.
Current applications.
Yes.
So those applications, what do they look like now?
They're the ones we had in the past and they're very basic on what they ask.
So going, moving forward, if you have anybody else that wants to apply, they'll still use those applications?
Well, we can do it that way or we can give them a new application to see how it works. We're just not making the seven that have already applied, fill out another application.
I guess my thought is that it should all be the same.
I, I, which is fine and I don't have a problem with that. I don't know that we'll get more students that want to actually apply for it. It would be nice if we could really encourage students that aren't only doing just running start. I would like to have a nice variety. I think it's important for you as the board.
Right. We need to have a student representation that also is more than fifty percent of the time at the school.
I agree. And that is some requirements for some of the school districts. And I just see that being a win-win. But then there's another school district that like, they have quite a few more reps than we do. But like three of the reps are full-time running start students, but they like going and doing the question for a cookie so much that these kids are coming in their downtime to the school to meet with students during lunches and things like that.
You know, with, just a thought, with a cookie for a question, if it, if it catches on and it becomes something that other students that are engaged in at the high school level or junior high level, you could almost use that to train them up for becoming that almost as a kind of a, you know, mentorship between those students that are on the board. So that would lend them some responsibility to mentoring, which we would want that, which would help pull in the engagement.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
I would agree.
I just got it. Okay, that's great.
And then the selection process. Is it being suggested that it's the principal, the superintendent, and one board member?
Well, it is because here's the thing. If you have a rounded, because you may not know a student, the principal knows them and, you know, a staff member knows them. Well, they've already gotten biased on this student where you're listing what's fresh airs to what the application is. It's somewhat like a job application. And it's nice to have a panel for discussion and that's why I included the rubric so that it can help you when you're distinguishing that. And this, the student representative recommendation form, also you can, we can do it several ways. We can give it to all of their teachers because you'll have some students interact well with one teacher as opposed to another teacher. And then these are all completely confidential, so they won't be released to the public. And that can help somewhat in the selection process. Again, it's completely up to you. These are just suggestions about how we may want to look at it so that we can take it in a different direction as far as student engagement.
I think the big concern is, is we can go up to two board members.
Yeah.
If we go to three, it could be right in a public meeting.
Right.
And I think that gets down into a decision you'd like to make. So if we go whole board, it would just be like when we selected a, a traditional board member. But it would also mean that I'm having a student interview in an open public board meeting. And I guess the big question is, is do we want to have our students interview in open public board meetings or not? So.
I think that's a lot for them.
Yeah.
That's a lot. That's a lot for them.
So I think it could be after like one to two board members, how you would like to identify one to two board members.
I think this is just for us to consider as a board. One of our conversations we earlier had, I think Bernadette, you talked a little bit about the diversity of students. And my concern is I find these applications by the nature of the questions that they're asking, truthfully, the magnitude of what's being asked of a student. I don't feel like this would really solicit a very diverse population. To me, this is like a, you would be extremely strong in your verbal skills. You would have already done all of the kind of straight A, very typical, high achieving leadership roles. So I, I would really like us to reconsider the applications through the lens of obtaining the, the information we want to know about them for the diversity of what we're trying to bring from the board.
If you look at the two different, if there's option one and option two.
I did read.
Option two is dressed down quite a bit.
It is definitely. It is, but I think even, I still feel, a concern even just on option two is, it, it's still, I think just like wide open paragraph spaces of like, you know, and I just think it still requires a pretty strong academic student to feel like they will compete well on this application. So.
Application three perhaps could be what you're looking for, Stephanie. With a lot of the kids, we have a lot of kids who do the work experience. And so putting in a leadership or work experience, you could have a kid who's really not great academically in the classroom, but they're blowing it out of the water in their job.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that one might add more of a diversified look that you're looking for. But these can be, this is why I gave them two, so that you guys could go through them and decide.
Okay, that would just be as we kind of go through them. I think that would be my initial feedback.
So.
Thank you for.
For our next board meeting, you would like us to be prepared prior to? Or can we give you the changes at the next one? You've got us your time, timeline that you'd like to?
I'm at your mercy. So if you want to give me the changes then, I can do it then, whatever you guys want.
Okay. Okay. I say that we take some time to look it over and really prepare well with it and then break it back.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think moving forward though, A.D., for this year is to just use the current application process.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, asset prevention program report, Mr. Monroe.
So this is a yearly report we do on the two buildings that are less than thirty years old that are, that received funding from state. So we have the multipurpose room at the elementary and then the four additional classrooms at the high school that, you know, sort of what I'm talking about with the. And I did go to a VCA training this year. I can become certified every fifth year. I think we have to have a certified person. I can't, you can't do your own building. But the thought is, is if I get certified in another neighborhood school district, you have shot this building.
Right.
Yeah. So that's kind of neat. So I just went through, not a whole lot of changes year to year. Update the condition. So the communications have been knocked down before. Pretty standard stuff and there's, I just got a lot of questions answered when I was at the training and about how, you know, different things with, when they look at your whole enrollment versus building by building. Makes it hard to get funding because our high school is large, stuff like that. And I kind of quizzed him on that. He gave me a, a runaround answer that basically said, if they did it that way, a lot of buildings would qualify that don't write up. So. Interesting. You guys have any questions about?
I don't have any questions because I can't pull it up. No, we can't look at it.
Neither can I.
Can we, can we reserve questions? Are you able to look it up on your phone?
Ryan has it on his phone, but I can't.
I mean, I think just the, the, the multipurpose room building is, has a score of seventy-eight percent overall. The last time I did one of these, last year consultant did it with seventy-eight point nine. The year before that, we did it seventy-nine, so. Small things that are normal with age, you're going to get now graded on. You're, you're only, you can only get like the top score is literally only brand new stuff, so that.
Jeff, on the multipurpose where it says chairlift at stage will not operate, is that the reason we got thirty percent on that, a poor rating?
Yeah, and that's a.
Is that the primary?
Yeah.
Primary reason?
Yeah. Yeah, because that's.
Do we have a present need for that? Like, I mean, do we have a student or students that have to have access?
On the backside of it, so you could, you know, it's like a wheelchair lift, literally goes like this.
Yeah.
It was, it was inoperable when I came here.
Okay.
And it's never been brought up.
I guess my question is, we don't have students that are being hindered access because that lift is not working?
And I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't know what was.
And if we have a ramp now, that would address that.
Yeah.
Concern or the access. Is there a reason we can't remove the?
Device.
Chairlift? Because if it's a required by law, I think we could be getting that repaired.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if that would be, in case we ever get to where we had it, make it operable. It's really not, it's a small little square.
I mean, I guess I'm thinking through the lens of, I was that student, if I was a parent of that student.
Yeah.
I don't think I would find an acceptable route around the building in our weather to think, you go out there, because I mean, I was in the building when we had a student in a butcher. So you go out in the building, you go out and around, you come clear back up the building.
Yeah.
Or you take the stair like every, it doesn't feel very accessible.
That's why I would say, don't get rid of it. I mean, we can get down and put down our elevator people.
I would like to
See what's wrong with it.
Have the board at least have a motion that we should be having it in working order. And have it assessed. Because I, I think that if we don't have it, it's something we're required to have, why would we have it as an ornament sitting there? I mean, it should be operable. So, I mean, we could.
And you know which one it is. It's on the stage.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I don't want to be in a position where we're not offering it fully as we should be. So I don't know that we need a motion, but can you look into all the, update us and then we can go from?
They probably have a record of why it was decided to be a lock on.
And that has not worked since I've been here.
It's a long time. It's, it's old.
And we're required to have it?
Well, we just have to have some type of ramp or way for somebody to get up there. And I think with what Stephanie was saying is, it's very inconvenient that they have to go all the way out and around.
Yeah. Yeah.
With that inside.
Yes.
It would be more accessible.
Exactly, yeah.
I'd be curious to see what cost would either to replace that existing lift or to repair the existing lift to make it operable.
Yeah. It might be better just to have something new that's up to standard and code.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting that training. Good buddy system.
Okay, athletics complaints, update board goal, Mr. Clark.
Hi, okay, so if you want to ask a question, just go right ahead. And then I could also make this available to you if you guys want. I can share it with you tomorrow. Okay, all athletics here today, or what have we been up to? Okay, there's a few highlights this year I want to kind of point out. There's six hundred, almost seven hundred kids that have turned up for athletics this year. And to finish their season or currently in sports. Okay, and I got the breakdown of the numbers there. Just to show you, they were kind of backed from our COVID time. Okay, so we're getting back and maybe even surpassing that in our participation. Boys made the state tournament first time in twenty-one years. Girls soccer made the state tournament first time in eight years. We had two second place individual players at the state wrestling tournament. Then more towards this department is we signed an appropriate agreement with BSN. This is going to really work out for us. And later on in the, my presentation here to see where we can use the rebate card to kind of help us get some other goals. We introduced the pole vault after decades of being dormant and then still working on it a little bit. And then we passed three court amendments. We raised the ticket prices as you're familiar with. Then we made an amendment that was consistent with the academic policies of the current WIA. And then we made an affordable alternative to the coaches' training, which is a, another training that the coaches have to do to be certified and be with kids. And then we got a forty thousand dollar grant for weight room improvement. This, okay, look that up, right? All right. But this has been a steep learning curve here too. So I just, the other day was writing down what, what is the athletic record? You could probably add a few more to that. But I would like, since I'm speaking to Steve right here, I would like to thank him for all his help with me this year because it has been a very steep learning curve. Some of those, again, I'll share this with you, but some of them I asterisk are very important or take a whole bunch of time and are difficult to. But you guys can get this. Okay, so one of the areas that are challenging, but we're making progress on is coaches. Now lately and last year, we've had some really quality hires. However, we have twenty-four new coaches this year or will have, okay? That's almost a forty percent turnover and that is not sustainable for quality programs. You have to have your people in place. Okay, so what can we do to keep them here? Well, one thing I did that may help, it's also important because it's something I have to do, is I created a more proactive and collaborative head coaches evaluation. So, but what happened is I will fill out their evaluation. They will as well. We will meet. We will talk over each line. Okay, so it's collaborative and we're being proactive and we can set realistic goals here. And I've done about three of these and they've been fantastic so far. I really like this thing here. Then the board passed a metaphor, boardball tournament, we already talked about that. All their coaches participate in the assistant coaching hiring process. These are their people. They have to make that decision. I make sure it's, you know, everything's on the up and up. This is their people. Okay, so they have to feel full ownership over that and they need to be fully supported. Okay, so if they have a problem, they can call me at any time. And then you want to know about compliance, all spring, coaches are hundred percent compliant, all spring athletes are hundred percent compliant. All paid coaches. There's a couple volunteers that are having technological difficulty as we speak. Okay, but we'll get them compliant as well. Okay? That was a goal yours. That just takes a lot of nudging, so to speak. But it's very, and it's all in one spot. It's all in five forms. So, pole vault, we kind of did that this year. I gave you a little kind of time lapse view of that, but so they, we took the old auxiliary long jump and we turned that into a pole vault. Because we had a multi-thousand dollar mat that was just sitting underneath the little gym. So I thought we better use that and also other reasons too. It increases participation. Our kids are going to turn up track and never thought about turning up for a sport before because they can fly in the air. I think that's pretty cool. Well, obviously we purchased these mats. We're going to have to use them, okay? Now we can compete fully in track meets. We can do all the events and we can host sub-districts and districts. Which are bringing a lot of teams into our area for a day, which is pretty good. The real people that deserve all the credit for this was Runfield Construction and Baby Reddymix. We saved about ten thousand dollars. What we didn't purchase was poles, a ball box, which you can see in the center one that's being put into place. That's what you stick the pole into to fly over the hat. We bought that and poles and and the rest we already had in mats and they did all the, the work there. So, pretty cool. We got a few things we got to do to that tomorrow and they're going to come back. But we should be flying over that thing soon.
I'll add that the kids, my son's in track and I think there's sixty-two, sixty-some kids that are out for track this year. And they're all wanting to get on one of them poles and fly over it. So this is a highly anticipated project here.
Is that where the, did you say that? Was that the, the old long?
So we have parallel on each side of the track, parallel long jumps. This is the one that's on the side where the CT gardens are.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm used, always unused. So this is kind of a win-win for us. I couldn't tell you how great these two companies are though. They just fabulous job.
Out of curiosity, it says that we've been idols for since nineteen eighty-three.
So we could have figured out, but I remember Dave Baylor taking a pole vault and jumping up on the sidewall of the gym and practicing the pole vault.
In nineteen eighty-nine, Mike Arnsbarger was flying over that pole.
Okay. I just didn't know what, what happened, if there was.
Yeah, I think that was, I mean.
He was supposed to be the historian.
You didn't have a lot of kids that really did it, but I, I think Biotork was coaching the pole vault at that time. And I think Mike might have been the only kid. Oh, yeah. Jason Quigg and Mike.
Chose not to put the pole vault in because it was about another ten grand.
Yeah.
Plus the mats, what?
Felt like quite a bit. Yeah.
So anyway, it was all about expenses and when we did compete track meets back in the day, we would do the pole vault either at Montessori or wherever we were going to compete, but we never had any kids do it because you have to have an authorized jump coach. We got two of them now.
Great.
There was a fence kind of close to that, you know?
Yeah.
Most of that there, Jeff did, so. Going on next one, current and future product. So, Mr. Ness was going to help me out here. Eric Smith was charged with rebranding and I'm helping him out rebranding the high school. Now, what does that mean? For this, for my aspect, it's the remand of the logo, the colors and kind of the things that go, the decor that goes around the school. So a current company that we're talking to right now, and I didn't put it up here first, the current company we're talking to gives you a logo and total of six marks. The marks could be like EHS but written a certain way or some certain design. So what you do is, I've already formed a committee. Okay, if we get the go-ahead, they start drawing things up. Then our committee looks at it and talks to them back and forth and this takes about a month, maybe six weeks. And we come out with a logo and six marks like that. Okay, and you just seen a kind of example, but there. So all trademarked on the school, this, this will be our brand.
I think the big thing right now we're looking at is ownership of trademark and copyright through Eric's rebranding process and our historical records and what type of branding and copyrights we own. And, and how, you know, that, that, I mean, I guess that's the biggest one is the ownership of the intellectual property on what we're putting there and how it's being used. Eric is currently working through our district website work. I asked Ron to, Ron came in about some production as we did our BSN contract. And the big issue that as we're entering and going deeper into our BSN contract is, is record of ownership of the intellectual property of logos that we currently use. So, which we don't know where those are. I think it's just a really unsure answer.
So that then goes in alignment with the updated policy that we made about how our logo colors.
Yeah, especially if you're talking about like Richard Ritz and stuff like that. It's like, who does hold ownership over our, hold ownership over our public image? And do we even have hold ownership over our own public image and restructuring ownership over our own public image, you know? So.
This would be an example of this particular company's work. This is their brand designers there. Another thing that, so I would, let's go back to the BSN agreement. So you get a rebate on how much money you spend during the year, right? So one thing that we have talked about for a long time, and I've heard people in the community mention this, is we don't have recognition banners in our gym. So one thing that we have talked about for a long time, and I've heard people in the community mention this, is we don't have recognition banners in our gym. Now, we do have first in state and second in state, right? But we don't have two one districts one year, everyone league one year, like that example up there. So we are, we have a committee for that too. Because you can do this project a hundred thousand different ways. What are you going to, what are you going to recognize? Link champs or what about second league? What about third new districts or whatever, or a state participant? So there's a lot of different ways to do this. So we're going to get together and I thought if we can make a decision on the direction we want to go. And we, there's been a lot of work done and tracking, you know, the link and district championships throughout the years. So if we want to do this, then I can use that rebate card to start the process, you know, to start paying for this and getting these up in the gym. How big they're going to be? What color? Where are they going to go? Those are all questions for the committee. We're going to all kind of work that out the next few months.
So on those banners, they look like you can take them down and then have things added to them.
So we send it back to them, they print the new year, send it back.
Do you have any of the information from the prior committee that started this before COVID?
Yeah, I got the file. So they, they got a good list of. But the first time you put this up, I just know nineteen forty-seven, we're going to miss the district champs. We're going to hear about it. But the good thing is they can, they can make that change in the future. My process a little bit. The other thing that people have asked, community members, is the induction of Hall Fainow. Mr. Bridge right here was the last, on the last committee that inducted in about two thousand eighty, right? About there.
About that.
Okay, so the early nineties were the last inductees. Now, as you know, speaking for people that were, I was a teacher here in the late nineties. As you know, that was kind of golden era. There's a lot of possible inductees from that time. So I thought we could get to work on that, you know, slowly get back to work on that. Love it if somebody wanted to take that off. Then current future product, here's what we have to seriously think about. And I have not done, I've only had one meeting with principal and C two director and so on and left, a high school trainer. Jamie, as you know, we had a volunteer, a great volunteer for four years. But we're not going to, and we don't have one now. We really need someone that is on staff, that is paid. And particularly for the bottom one to be a concussion protocol manager for all sports. Okay, most concussions come in the game of soccer as well. So that's something we got to think about too. I know other schools have them. They, you know, teach a couple of classes during the day and then a half hours after school or for games. But I think we got to start thinking about that seriously. We're putting ourselves out there without having one. And then weight room, we got, there's some examples, some of the stuff we purchased here. We've got forty thousand dollars from the golf tribe and are in process of seeking other grants for that. Because I don't separate that from the athletic success. It goes hand in hand. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm a high school trainer. Other districts, I know other bigger districts have a trainer. How do you spread that person out across all the sports that need one for equity reasons?
They don't really. They kind of do a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here.
Okay.
Generally, the best way to do it is when you, you're only going to find your very, your large foray schools have like a trainer. You know, I mean, what you're going to predominantly see in the district, probably even up to a two A, three A and probably some smaller foray schools. A high-grade athletic training sports medicine teacher through a C two program, a health program. Who's going to stipend the athletic trainer role. Then really what you do is you make, I can just answer it. My wife was the athletic trainer for Shelton. Long, long, a big decade ago, so I was married to an athletic trainer and I was a yearbook advisor. Easiest way to do it is you do it as an internship class. So the students are doing their internship. So you're growing your CTE program internship on a seventh hour course. And then they have students that are taking an internship program in the after-school day. We provide taping support. So then you actually backfill with FTE calculated times with your athletic trainer time. So this really would, I know this is a gold graph, this would take a direct partnership with our CTE programs on alignment with an allied health program. If, if we're moving forward on this, where you would want to have an athletic trainer who's probably teaching into a seventh hour. And then you're, you're running a internship hour class, like a occupational class where the students are earning credit. You're calculating out FTE on those students.
Jamie, I think the other thing too is to almost sixty percent of school districts in the state of Washington don't have a trainer.
Okay.
And as Chris said, it's usually the big ones that do. But the other thing they do, that the trainer's responsibility often comes with just home games. So that when your league meets at the beginning of the season, they all identify who's got a trainer. So if Alma's going to play at Black Hills for a soccer game, Black Hills will say, we have a trainer on site.
Okay.
So you work together to try to cover as many of those events as you can. But you're spot on, can't do them all.
Nice.
And especially when you're dealing with JV and C squads, which kids get hurt there too. But it's, it's just a numbers issue that the state of Washington is pushing hard, WI is pushing hard to try and get them. But it's, as Chris said, it's all about.
It's gotten harder to fill until about two thousand sixteen, seventeen, having an athletic trainer as a bachelor's degree program. I'm hoping at least she has no idea. Now, and that requires a master's degree. So, so it's really kind of collapsed the scope of available athletic trainers when it was a bachelor's degree varying program.
That's the other thing too, is that there are certain degrees of certification. He's absolutely right. To get the certification that you're looking for, it takes a lot of training.
It used to be a, it used to be a bachelor's degree only now it requires a master's degree. It's tightly, tightly. Yeah, but it's tightly reduced the amount of athletic trainers that are available with the available market. And then if you're going to try to backfill them with teaching, then you're going to use, you know, they're going to teach a sports medicine class. Then that's even more restrictive. But it's doable. I think the only way to do it is you want to backfill with an allied health program.
I like the idea and I love the idea of that many kids in sports right now. That number has definitely came up tremendously in the last couples for last year or so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciated seeing that, I mean, we had to speed read because there was a lot of jobs. It's good to see the, and just to be reminded very visually, the and scope of, yeah. Any one of those things, just scheduling buses and referees is probably could almost be a full-time job in and of itself. Particularly with spring season and all the rain and oh, let's schedule everything again or whatever. But I think it's, it's good. I just appreciate really seeing everything from the proactive side, the liability, you know, keeping us in compliance to the day-to-day operations. So thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, well.
And for doing all the jobs.
I was about to tell you like the buses and, and the financial stuff, I have great help, I have great support with the people I work with, the Taylor and Kelly and those people, so.
Well, and I think we're getting some systems that are a little bit more automated, which, you know.
So I don't have file cabinet full of coaches' names anymore.
Right.
It's all, almost all.
Right, and it's a great, final forms has been a great system for parents to utilize. Students are getting, the athletes are getting their, their notifications. So yeah, I think it's a great tool to be utilized. So thank you. Okay, superintendent and board roles and responsibilities. Mr. Nesmith and I met with Tim Garcha, who is runs WASDA. And we did this primarily to talk about our policies and procedures. Things that were expiring, things that are out of date, things that are not with the times and do not back or, or are not in alignment with the goals and the, I guess, achievements of the district. So we had a nice, pretty long conversation. And he started out at the top with roles and responsibilities. Reminding the superintendent and the board of their roles. Meaning Chris, all of the hard stuff falls on you. And he started out with basically saying that the board has a very specific structure, policy, procedure, governance and budget. And we are auditors of those specific items. And if we are not being prudent with our policies and procedures, we do not have a lot of things to stand on or back us. And so Chris has been doing a lot of work digging up those policies and procedures that we do not have either in place. They don't cover anything for us and things that have been so expired that we haven't used them since nineteen eighty. So we, we really have a lot of work as a board to do. And, and really to focus on our job. I think that's the most effective piece of work we do here. Because if we do not have a procedure, there isn't a lot of things for us to fall back on. And we need to make sure, our job is to make sure that Mr. Nesmith has followed his policies and the procedures. And we, we do not help ourselves by not having these updated. So I apologize in advance if our meetings start to get really long with policy and procedure. I'm sorry, fellow board members, we're going to have a lot of reading to do, but it's necessary above all else.
I think one of the big things is the way it works is it's my job to follow through with board policy and procedure. So like the one thousands is the board superintendent roles. The two thousands is student learning. That's where we agree we would start. We start on the two thousands because we felt as a board, student learning is really our core function. Right, and then you go to the three thousands, four thousands, five thousands. Five thousands is like personnel and that's what I have to lean back on. And then when you move into like, when you have a complaint against board policy, the role of the board is to become an auditor. To say, did I follow through on all the board policies as the board policies explicitly laid out? And then the appeal processes are, you know, parent comes in and they want to appeal a long-term suspension. That long-term suspension would be pushed on if those are the four thousands. And then those four thousands board policies would be what would be reviewed on a long-term suspension. And it, it, or, and then then it would be, did I, did I and the principals, the district follow those procedures? And if we felt that the procedures were upheld or the policies were upheld, then the suspension would remain being upheld. It wouldn't, it doesn't really come down to a jury. And there's an opinion like the board serves as a jury. Like, sure, my kid did all of these things and the district did everything right, but I just want my kid back in school. And I would like to appeal my suspension because I want him back in school. And that's really not the board's role to service the jury. Board's role is to say, all of these procedures were upheld. You might not like the outcome, we might feel bad about the outcome. But as long as all of the steps were upheld, that suspension would remain being upheld.
And I think the other thing is, is I, I always, I think I'm going to say his name, Hiram. Is it right? Hiram, I knew I said wrong, sorry. When Hiram was here, he also reminded us that as a board, we can write policy and procedure as long as it's in compliance with law and covers the things that we need. So if we're not finding that things that we have fit, we need to really put Alma's touch on it to do the things that are important to our students, our staff and our district.
I think that comes with a philosophical and a pragmatic approach. So in some instances, we've come across, we have board, we've adopted WASDA board policy as examples as written. And that comes with the understanding that this is just a blanket. So a great example would be like, we have a district substance abuse specialist. And our, we have board policy that would say, we would refer everything to our district substance specialist. We don't have a substance specialist, we cannot uphold the policy. And when it came time to the board to step into the role of auditor, it would be your job to verify if I used a substance abuse specialist. And when no such person exists, it means that we immediately failed on board policy. And as a result, anything being done under that policy would be overturned because we don't have a position like that in place.
And I look at it, in that specific example, I look at it as a failure to help out the students in our district, period.
So we have kind of talked about it from the philosophical approach on the two thousands of what we'd like to accomplish philosophically. There's also a very pragmatic approach in how our board policy, we really need to, and it can be a ten-year process to get board policy updated. But we have a pretty big job in front of us on updating board policy and making sure that the policy written matches the intent of the board. And that when we are adopting WASDA policy, it's not carte blanche. It's, did we modify that policy to match positions we have, the philosophies we have, the principles we hold and where we want to sit in the district.
It was a very invigorating meeting.
Well, I appreciate you guys taking the time to do that. I know it's on your day off and.
Already. Okay, communications and comments. Have anybody from ETO? EESP? Ecopa? Admin? Persons to be heard, emails? Okay. Unfinished business is approval of board policy forty-five hundred is unmanned aircraft system and model aircraft. Sorry. Yes. Before, before you read that first, sure. Can we just make a note to add our, maybe I'm looking for, I'm missing it. The, the caveat that we can't respond to any public comments. You may know that, but that's just our policy. And we'd love to have a little piece that says, we do care about what you think, but due to our rules, you can't speak to what you're going to speak about. So, yes. So that's, there's, there's our little disclaimer.
I'm Megan Porter. I'm an elementary school graduate since two thousand. I have a, currently have a second grader and a fifth grader at elementary school. And I must admit that the last three years, I've been very involved in my work and family and I missed out on a lot to include gaining some information about the bonds. I was surprised to hear about the long-range facilities planning that has been occurring during the past year when I attended a meeting a few months prior to the election. The only reason I knew about that meeting was because a friend of mine shared it on Facebook. I didn't know the Citizens for Alma School's Facebook page existed. I hadn't gotten anything about the bond from the school and there wasn't information easily accessible on the website. I'm frustrated, frustrated about the lack of communication, to say the least. I have nearly twenty years of experience in communications work in the public sector. I have been the communications person for numerous bonds and elections in my current position. I know what you can and cannot talk about when you are considering a valid measure. And then what you can and cannot talk about when you actually put that measure on a ballot. Unfortunately, for the recent bond measure, the school district failed to bring the information forward to the community, resulting in less than thirty-six percent of the voters voting against the measure. I'm one of those who voted yes. I voted yes because I believe in the work the community did prior to the vote. I believe we need updated facilities for our students and I believe we need a multi-sports base for our youth to play and allow for spectators in more than just a couple of uncovered patricians. I also believe this community agrees, but doesn't understand what was being asked for the scope of the project because of the lack of communication about the request. I've talked to multiple parents, teachers, staff and community members and have received the same response from all of them. Yes, we need a communications person at Alma School District. We're a growing community and a growing school. If the administration and district are not telling the community about the growth, about the issues in the schools and about the needs of the district, there will never be a successful bond and the schools will continue to crumble around the students. I'm personally, as a mother of a fifth grader, terrified to send my child to no school. I've talked to many parents and students about the things, the horrifying things that were happening at that school. Are they true? I don't know. The district isn't talking about it. I can say I haven't heard anything from the district about the middle school other than what I've learned at one of these meetings, just because I chose to attend. That doesn't give me the confidence to move my fifth grader to Alma School. These are concerns that many of the parents and staff and community, community members share, but I just find the district is just not talking about it. I learned at the last board meeting in February that you're investing in new communications tools, like messaging service that Eric talked about and a new website. Without investing in someone who knows how to communicate and write for the web, this is just an exercise in futility. And we will find our information in the same state that it's in now. I strongly urge you to consider creating a professional communications person for this district. Will it be an investment? Absolutely, but I can tell you that it is worth it. Find someone who has their pulse on the community, has roots here and is also invested in the school. And you will see a difference in how the community responds. Like, there's so many cool things happening, the pole vault, why are we not talking? Like, there's so many cool things happening. The pole hall, why are we not talking about this? That's so cool. There's nobody telling the story of the district and it's just gonna continue to be a frustration for your parents, for the community members, and you're not gonna see people supporting this school if you're not telling the stories about what's going on. Sorry, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business. Approval of board policy forty-five hundred unmanned aircraft system and model aircraft, second and final reading.
I'm in for the approval of board policy forty-five hundred unmanned aircraft system and model aircraft, second, final meeting.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, approval of board policy sixty-nine seventy, naming schools and facilities, first reading.
I can't get back to it either.
Nope.
Should we?
Can I move it?
Yeah, table it.
Can we table that?
Yeah, uh, yeah. Yeah.
On his phone.
Well, I brought it up. It, it was already bookmarked. I brought it up because I read it.
I need a motion to table it.
I moved to table the approval of board policy sixty-nine seventy, naming schools and facilities, first reading until our next meeting.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in, all in favor? Excuse me. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, approval of performing arts boosters fundraiser. Questions for you guys? It's okay. I'll just pass this through. Everybody can kinda put an eyeball on it, look at it.
So the only question that I have was, so due to the high flyers performance, that's where the request of the GMS came.
Correct.
And so normally choir performance band is usually in the commons and all that will be moved to the gym.
No, everything will still be in the commons. We're just gonna use the high flyers just for that. Or the gym, just for the high flyers.
And then, of course, using concession.
That would be great.
So this is to hold an auction? Is that what I'm reading?
Essentially. We're showcasing the students that have gone to state, i.e. band choir. Uh, Trump's gonna do a little skit and the high flyers are actually going to state, so we wanna showcase them.
This is kinda like what Montesano did last night.
But it's not a fundraiser.
It is a fundraiser. Global Charge Commission at the door. I'm sorry, I left that out. I can't always revise recently.
So to charge at the door on school property?
With kids, obviously.
With kids that are part of the programs. Does that become ASB money?
Sure. You know, without being able to read it, because I can't get into it, um.
It doesn't say it on here either.
So it's charging at the door for who's performing, is it a performance?
The high flyers.
Be our students performing.
And.
I think that would step all the way over into, it would be money made off of students performing in an ASB, which would turn it into an ASB fundraiser.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be, it illegally would fall under the review of being an ASB fundraiser. It wouldn't be able to be a booster fundraiser.
Okay. Could we adjust and make it no payment at the door, but it just remains the auction?
Yeah, I think you're not making money off of the, uh, yourselves.
Yeah.
The issue is, is when you're turning, turning the students into fundraisers, right? The fundraiser is around students that are members of the ASB and the state auditors would view that as an ASB event. So I think if you did an auction, you had students performing, your fundraiser is off the auction. I think that's fine.
In concessions.
You gotta look over for a second because she knows the state auditor.
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
Doing the, uh, fundraiser is just the auction and not the students performing. Auction, that's fine.
I believe it would be, it would be funny.
I gotta go back to my.
As long as they're not charging for the performance.
Yeah, I need to defer to my, my, my state auditing expert.
Yeah, you just kinda charge admission for the public to come in to watch these performances. Uh, because then it crosses the line and ends up being technically ASB funds. So, yeah, and then the auction is just like silent auction.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
The primaries and the stories. Not, there will not be.
Always like, oh. Now I have another.
The auditors will have.
All right, I'll move for the approval of performing arts fundraiser fundraiser.
Well, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of the EHS competitive drill dance travel to Yakima, March twenty-third, March twenty-fifth for state competition.
The only thing I wanna say, um, about this is in the future, I know that with, with a drill team that they don't find out they're going to state until a last minute or the week before or two weeks before, if we could do a blanket, um, approval, like at the beginning of the season. That way, because I mean, this is leaving tomorrow.
I think the plan is, is we're gonna have to do, we're gonna need to, and one of the things Ron is working on is getting the approval and the hotel blocks. That hasn't been something that's happened in the past was the, the state. And we didn't have the state approval process in place anyway. And we weren't doing the approval for students when they were traveling for sports, which we learned that wasn't something that was historically being done in the last couple of years. So Ron has now got that in place to make sure that's aligned with board policy. So then the next step is to make sure now that we're being proactive and getting all the state travel done early and the hotel blocks done early.
We're in graduate, right to begin school, sure.
I just worry because if something would have come up tonight and we're like, uh, can't do it. I don't want it to come back on the board and say, board wouldn't let us go.
We had a state.
Ever do that.
Well, we had a state trip go that we learned after that we weren't, that, that wasn't even historically being done. And I had to go back through old board minutes and I was like, wait a minute, we haven't been doing any of this approval girl travel. So I can tell you that, um, we're, 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 uh, continuous level, we're in, in continuous improvement. Because your concern of being late, the good news is, is that wasn't, you know, prior to that wasn't even being done. So. So we can do, we can move from not done to being done, to being done timely.
Well, it's nice and I appreciate the fact that as we go, we identify systems that need to be developed and put in place. So I know it's a daunting task, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's all I had. And I don't know if anybody from Dance Drills here, but I wish them luck. I'll move for the approval of EHS compet- competitive dance drill to travel to Yakima, March twenty-third through March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three for the state competition.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval to seek bid to update, replace the ag fabrication shop. Is it fume? Extractor, oh. Sorry, I thought this was the next, next line on here. Fume extractor system? Didn't see extractor system. Sorry. Uh, I don't know. Good evening, Kristy.
Good evening. So yes, um, what it is, is our old, um, well, we're, the CTE is, the part of the shop is built in nineteen fifty-two. So we have some issues. Uh, it was not completely updated when we, uh, added on to the high school. And so, uh, we are now running into an old system in our ag fabrication shop that it is not extracting the fumes that it needs to from our air. And so we need to seek bids and the reason why we need to seek, seek because of our board policy uh, that anything over, um, seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand, we need to put that notice out to the public and seek those bids. So what we're asking, I think it outlines it there that I'm looking for board approval tonight and then we're gonna put that out in the newspaper. Uh, I'll follow all the protocols there and then, uh, collect bids and then be able to select uh, the bid that works for us and then, um, hopefully get that all, that system updated this summer using current CTE funds. And I have those because of our carryover that we've, we've had so that we've been planning for this for a while, knowing that it's gonna need to. We have a lot of hygiene stuff that needs to be updated in our shop area and we've been doing that slowly over the years. And this is one of the, uh, last ones we need to do.
I move for the approval to seek a bid to update or replace the egg fabrication shop fume extractor system.
Extractors. I'll second that. It's been a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of Superintendent Christopher Ness Smith evaluation.
I was gonna say, I, I, on the agenda, I didn't see.
I don't have a form. I don't have a form.
I don't think we've seen.
I don't think I saw that either of these.
You got it a few board meetings. It was an attachment.
Was it a PDF to fill out?
Yes.
I don't.
I think. Yeah. Can we, can we table it so we have time?
Cause I, I'll, I can fill it out and get it ready. But I don't.
It appears we may need to table that till the next board meeting.
Yeah, cause I'll have to fill it out. I, I don't.
I can't even look on the agenda to see if it's even there.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, table the approval of Superintendent Christopher Ness Smith's evaluation to the next board meeting.
I will find that and send it to you guys.
Okay. I'll be honest, I thought I was just gonna have a form that came that, I don't know what I was thinking. Okay. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion or further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So then the second one?
Yeah.
We'll do the same with?
Based on the same discussion.
Sorry.
I move for the approval of Superintendent Ness Smith's contract to be tabled until the next board meeting.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
So the, you'll be able to provide that to us as well, the contract.
I haven't seen the contract.
The contract states that we would have a renewal date and then we would have until June thirtieth to negotiate the contents of it.
Okay. Cause I just wanted to get a copy of the current contract that, that we have. I know, I know I have been part of the approval process in the past, but I just haven't seen it. Since we're talking about it, I'd like to, you know, just review it, so.
Yeah.
And then if you go back in your past packets, it should be in your very twenty-second packet. You had an executive, uh, session about it.
But, but not the new contract?
No.
No, there's no.
Seen the contract at all.
Okay. You mean the twenty, the twenty-first?
Okay.
For the twenty-second meeting?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
The, 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 the new, the contents of new what would be done that has until June thirtieth. What would be approved is.
The evaluation.
Yeah, and just the intention.
Right. I, that's why I was saying on the twenty seconds meeting, February twenty-first in the board packet, I don't have an attachment. All I have is, yeah, five hundred and.
I'll try and find it.
Uh, thirty-some pages of, five hundred and thirty-five pages of.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
If we can just get a copy of, of that. That'd be helpful.
Please and thank you. Okay, uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Budget, Ms. Arnold.
Um, I think you guys got copies of all your budget reports.
We do not.
I think they just can't bring them up because.
Running about one point four million right now is the fund balance. I'm looking towards the end of the year that will end about three hundred thousand down from last year to a two point two, two point three. Um, but in the coming year after that, because our S R money will be going away. Right now I have over like about one point five million sitting in our budget that is only S R money. So you can see what that's going to do to our fund balance when it is gone. Because we will start eating that out because I won't have the things put on S R. So I just want you guys to be thinking about that. We have about a year. And then the, the pitfall bits.
Yes. Thank you for that reminder.
Any questions? When you get a chance, send me your questions when you see it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, enrollment, Mr. Nessman.
We are down about five, about six FTE from February's count from sixteen oh three to fifteen ninety-six. We have currently about, uh, sixty-two in open doors though, so it takes our total district head count to six hundred, sixteen hundred and ninety-one. So we are, um, hands down the, uh, the, uh, second largest school in Grace Harbor County behind Aberdeen. We have passed all over our other like-sized districts. So here, we, we are down, uh, this month, but almost every other month it continues to keep up. So we're growing.
You said sixteen ninety-one?
Sixteen ninety-one heads, sixteen hundred and fifty-eight point seven zero FTE. Um, that includes our open doors enrollment, our engagement population and fifteen hundred and ninety-six point seven zero excluding our, uh, our, uh, open door students. I mean, um, just for fun, uh, high school, we are sitting at about four hundred and fifty-nine point nine two FTE, three hundred and fifty-eight. The middle school is hundred and ninety. And I had to have Eric print me off a makeshift enrollment report because the current average counts, our board agenda is not working tonight.
Okay, well, you're still up. It's your superintendent report.
Um, I think I wanna lead off with a letter from Chief Schultz to, uh, Ms. Nelson. I'd like to express my appreciation for your participation in the recent entry-level oral board for the Elma Police Department. All of the members of the oral board panel were professional and thorough. Thank you for spending some of your, your busy schedule to assist me with the important task of hiring entry-level police officer at the Elma Police Department. The city of Elma and I are grateful for the time and effort you took to share your thoughts and impressions of seven candidates. It is an honor to have close friends, you and other community members to have the common goal of masking, making positive decisions for our city. Thank you for your ongoing support of Elma's Police Department. So, and that is sincerely, uh, Susan, Susan Schultz, uh, Chief of Police. So I wanted to take the time to thank, uh, Chief Schultz. So I wanted to take the time to thank Chief Schultz for recognizing Ms. Nelson and her, um. Uh, for her commitment, you know, Ms. Nelson teaches a crime scene investigation course. And just really appreciative of our, our, our relationship with the city. Um, second, I'm coming from the youth engagement, um, youth summit over at some Pacific Hospital. And I'm pretty excited about the new plans on how we're going to begin engaging our youth and setting our youth up for, uh. Kind of looking at five key work areas through making sure that we have a place where it's used to be engaged and. You know, have activities that represent them in a way to connect and, um. Making sure that we have students on track and be prepared for their future goals. So, um, I think it was a successful youth summit and, uh, I think that we'll be having ongoing meetings. And I think right now, Mr. Clark is off to a great start of spring sports and.
How many the kids are?
This is true. I think I'm with Mr. Clark, he can see me out there running a mile around the track.
There's a weight limit on each pole. We didn't order any my size. I'm guessing not my size either.
Guessing it looks like we're safe.
Right, so with that, that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hanson.
Uh, well, saying on the topic of sports. Evening from a first person perspective, I'm softball's been pretty good so far. And I got to watch a little bit of the baseball game today. It's like they, last I checked, it was three to two and they were only one run behind. They won?
Thank you for the update.
Which is good, especially for their youth night, which softball has one coming up as well and even having a youth camp. And, uh, it's been really great to see a bunch of those girls out there doing something that they love. I know I fell in love with that sport. Um, when I was their age and so seeing, uh, that same love for athletics and I know that that will continue up for them. To be able to work with older kids is just really nice. Also, have to say, the new uniforms that we got, they're pretty nice. Um, so just thanks for that and the equipment that we've gotten is really nice. Um, FFA districts are approaching next week for the middle schoolers and for the high schoolers. We have a lot of competitions happening, um, a lot more than I've seen in my time at FFA. This year we're going to be having a milk quality products team, which I want to be a part of, that I'm very excited about.
Sound very fun.
I, I love milk and cheese and so I'm very.
I'm glad that you love milk and cheese.
Well, you don't have to drink that, but.
Sure. It's like finding out if a cow's been in an onion patch or.
Um, but so competitions like those, we have kids that are going straight to state. And then with districts, we have a lot of middle schoolers competing, have a lot of high schoolers competing. There's just such a big variety of competitions that are happening that I'm so excited to see and I have such high hopes for these kids because they're gonna do so good. Um, and then I wanted to end my report by encouraging all of you to live in the moment and take your time where you're, with where you're at in the present. I don't know if it's the weather being really nice that makes me think about this a lot, just wanting to sit down on my porch and read or whatever it is. But I just encourage you all to whether the weather is actually nice out or not, or even if it's absolutely pouring rain, just being thankful for where you're at. Being thankful for your body and how much it does for you and be nice to your mind too, because that's a good part of you are, so. That's all.
Thank you.
I'm always used to having an executive session. Hey, make a motion, I'll be adjourned.
Stephanie, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion about that? All in favor? Motion carries, needing adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening.